It is six P M. It is six P M. We'd like to welcome everybody here. We have some very special guests here tonight. We're grateful for that. And so we'd like to call order our city council meeting. Megan, would you do a roll call for us?
Yes. Councilmember Norvell.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Sure.
Mayor Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Beal.
Thank you. Tonight, uh, we would like to begin with a bunch of allegiance. Um, Richard Nielsen. He will be followed. We may have to wait for just a minute. That's right. Just because he's running the tablet, but he'll be followed by by Bishop Sean Carr.
Please stand and join me in the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. One nation, under one end of this for all.
Sean wanted to be here for this. He's just giving back his spring break and we talked earlier this afternoon. He is. But I'm one minute away.
I prepared some dead jokes for you.
We'll do that at the end of the meeting. Uh, we do something that we, we like to do in honor just a few minutes. Also have Richard Nielsen here, who was going to describe and help us to understand his shooting club. Asked him to come in and present that to us. I think we all need to see what a great thing he is doing. Sean.
Father, I had no idea it was taking the opportunity to gather together. As residents hearing from to join with the Efron City Council. The best of the seeming thankful father for the wonderful home we have here. We're grateful for all of the people that make up the, the community that we enjoy in. And Father, we're thankful for the moisture that we've been receiving here and we hope to use it well. We're grateful, Father, for the opportunity to honor our residents and who has asked about bless the Rasmussen family in particular and all those who are enduring loss and their other we ask additional blessings on our leaders here in the Efron City Council. And they will be guided and able to make choices that be wise and will bring us all toward a better future. Father, we're grateful. For this opportunity and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
Um, all right, Megan, are you moving on to presentations? Josh, could you? Would it be okay if your family came up here just to the podium? Is that okay, Rocket Mol? Thank you again so much for coming. We kind of met in chat the other night. We're glad that you're here. Uh, we don't do a lot of these. And, uh, we do proclamations when there is something that has occurred in the community that has affected deeply the entire community. And as I was contemplating this, I felt very strongly that myself and the council knew Allie's life uh, such that we wanted to honor and honor her influence. We feel like that this is the will and the desire of our residents. And so, uh, we have made a proclamation. A proclamation honoring Alyssa Jaylee Rasmussen, affectionately known as Allie. Was a beloved daughter, sister, granddaughter, and a friend whose bright spirit, boundless kindness, and unwavering love for others left in the a delible mark on her family, friends, and the entire community. And whereas Allie, the youngest of five children and the cherished only daughter of Josh and Molly Rasmussen, brought joy and laughter and light to all who knew her with her vibrant personality, her gift of making friends and a love of people. And whereas Allie possessed a remarkable ability to uplift those around her, sharing her beautiful smile, heartfelt hugs and genuine care with all, believing she was everyone's best friend and demonstrating a love for life through her passions for sports, music, and service. And whereas the tragic and sudden passing of Allie on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five brought profound sorrow to her family, friends, and the entire Efron community, but also revealed extraordinary strength, unity, compassion, and and whereas in the days following her passing, the Efron community demonstrated an outpouring of love for you guys. At support gathering and light visuals adoring the town with pink and blue reds, offering acts of service and rallying around for Rasmussen family for family expression of kindness and solidarity. And whereas Allie's life and legacy continue to inspire us all to be more loving, more compassionate, more dedicated to lifting those around us as embodied to the heartfelt message that has spread throughout our select city, Love Like Allen. And whereas Efron City wishes to honor Allie, Allie's memory and remarkable way she brought people together by dedicating April to as Love Like Allie Day. A day to remember her bright spirit and to encourage acts of love, kindness, and community service in, in her honor. Now therefore, I, John Scott, Efron City, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Efron City, do hereby proclaim April tenth as Love Like Allie Day in Efron City and encourage all citizens to honor Allie's legacy by performing acts of kindness, fostering friendships, and embracing the love and unity that she so effortlessly shared with the world. In witness thereof, I have hereby to set my hand to cause the seal of Efron City to be affixed the second day of April two thousand and fifteen. Twenty five time flies. We put you to now, but we love you. We honor Allie. We honor what she has meant to our community. This is a card. Known the Rasmussen family. Love. We would like to obscure you.
We know how many of us.
Do you want to stay for the next Our next presentation is Richard Nielsen. His program. And Richard, on your way up. I just want to ask you, I know you're going to break your, your neck, but I just want to ask you, how, what is the age that someone can begin this program?
Chad up. Fourth grader.
Okay.
Fourth grader. Off white nine.
Awesome.
And high school seniors.
I have a grandson that I know would like this program.
Everybody come up here, parents and all.
Follow up.
So make a line up here.
Are you going to do some practice tonight?
We practice out in the snow. Okay, councilman, mayor, thank you for letting us let us be here. This is about half our team. Rest of them are on stream paper. Thanks. Uh, I'm so proud of this group. Steve Wilden, Dale Nielsen were my official certified assistant coaches at Texas School two weeks ago. And, uh, Melissa's standing at the back, but she makes sure she did everything nice. Uh, just gonna introduce each of these kids. They've all brought some of the things that they want. I'll tell you what those things are, but I'll start with Clyde Nicholson. He's from Nantucket. Last year, well, let me, let me back up. This is a, a national organization, USA Youth Education Institute of Sports. Utah Education Institute of Sports is part of. And we're one of fourteen teams in Utah, and we are part of the Southern Utah region, which consists of Big Park Group, Milford, Richfield, and St. George. Now it gets act of pride. This young man I hear last year was number one in Utah. Number one.
Wow.
He worked so hard for that. It's amazing to watch him work. He went through a period of time of practice down there last year where he did miss the birds from the mound.
Wow.
They all on the ski field, some of the others didn't play there. Weird. He's a great young man. I'm gonna let him show you a couple of these things.
Well, thank you, Councilmember, for having us today. Appreciate that being here. Uh, this is the one I'm looking for. This is the one we were just talking about. This is my This is the one I wanted today last year.
It was cool.
We as shooters really like to win buckles. That's kind of what we
Turn around and show that crowd just a little bit. That big crowd.
This is one that, so as well as winning state, I'll put in the highest average in state. So I named the day team captain of T U Utah. So that's a buckler. Doesn't work for that. And one more. This was one that especially to me, you know, shot a hundred, a perfect hundred out of a hundred. Um, crap.
Shoot shows.
Hundreds don't come easy. No. But, uh, I've seen his room at home. He also has a mission call in June to
I'm going to New Zealand.
New Zealand. So I have great young man. Okay, Chase. And Chase Anderson from Efron, son of Jared and that. Wait.
There's a duffel bag that won state two years ago. It'd be first place junior varsity ski. Also, that same year won Rookie of the Year for the state of Utah. We mean, Mark Hennig. Highest average is been about that one more.
You look like your dad.
No, actually, you're real.
Wilden, son of Stevens, Melissa. You're up.
My best medal. I won it for my highest game score, ninety-seven.
Oh, wow.
Won it down in Hurricane.
He's a Ryan Wilden, daughter of Steven Melissa, first year shooter.
Wow.
And it's awesome.
Advance a little bit. Other than every one.
Are all of you using twelve gauge?
Yeah.
Louis Nielsen, son of Dale and Katie. Sorry. Go ahead.
Three weekends ago in Vegas, I had a Rasmussen regional shoot. The two third places, first speed and sporting place. And this is my buckle. I want a silver buckle shoe.
See by the buckles. I'll do some hair.
And Jackson Johnson from Fairview, my fourth grader. A guy told me the other day, he says, he's going to be famous. He's already famous in Utah. Don't show yourself.
Yep.
He shoots two different guns. He shoots one of ski, one of trap, full twelve gauge.
The gun is taller than he is.
But he does a hundred gun repetitions at home before bed every night. So he has a form. And his, his folks are there for everything I need when I need it.
Thank you for doing that.
And that, that can be said for those that aren't here also. Needless to say, I'm quite proud of this is the the, it's either the seventh or eighth year that this program's been going on. And I have, I have many other state champions. Yeah. But, you know, these are kids that excel in what they do and very coachable and hard workers. You know, it just keeps me going.
Dad, you said, who would have liked this when you were a young man? He said, I still like I think it's awesome.
We're in the old guy debate. I got him last year at the senior games because competition died.
This is amazing. Just an amazing program. Richard, I've talked about this for many, many years. And, uh, Lloyd, would you take a picture? Um, we're gonna take a picture also.
Life's long. Get life.
Um, this is amazing. And what they do is absolutely amazing. This is a life skill that should be done in every part of this nation. Um, and I commend you young people for obtaining this life skill. It is, it is vitally important. And I would encourage you to encourage your friends to also sign up for them. So we'll give you a big round of applause.
And can I just say one, just quit with one more thing? This competition part of it is good, but the other life skills that these kids get out of this, number one thing we teach is gun safety and that guns are okay. And we teach them how, you know, how to shoot, how to be proficient at what they do. We teach them to be good team members, to support each other. And we teach them that their competition in Milford and Richfield and Pro Bowl and wherever, those guys are not our enemies. Those guys are our competition. And we have, these guys have friends all over Utah that they wouldn't have. But, uh, that's, that's the, the big takeaway from this. And then when they get my age, they can still do it and probably better than I can. Life, life sport. Thank you.
Now, before they'll leave, Richard, I think I think everyone needs to understand the amount of time of his own time that he uses to craft a skill with these young people. He does it because he loves kids. He does it because he loves the sport. He does it because he knows that, that the life skills that he is teaching are going to go on into the next generation and into the next generation. So, Richard, I think you deserve a round of applause for it.
Thanks. Do it inside. Yes. It's really worth it.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
We now like to move on to item two in the consent agenda for adaption A, B, and C. Any questions regarding the consent agenda, Councilmember? On the way, we approve the consent items. Motion made by Councilmember Norvell, second by Councilmember Stevens, all in favor? Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item three, study agenda, item three, A, procurement policy. And I think
That is me. Yeah. Does this work?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Okay. Okay, so with the procurement policy, um, I just want to let you know that we've run this through, um, all our department heads so that they all had an opportunity to weigh in on this. And essentially what this is, is how we buy goods and services and make sure that it is fair and ethical, cost effective, and transparent. So just having a policy on the books. So you'll see um, the definitions in there. Uh, then if you look on section three, um, what we've done is created three tiers. So zero to five thousand dollars. Um, the, it is, the department head is authorized to make, uh, purchases uh, to that amount. Uh, tier two is five thousand and one cent up to twenty-five thousand. Uh, is, it requires a solicitation of bids. Um, so as you get higher in the dollar amount, um, the more is required in order to, um, uh, get that done. So minimum number of bids, uh, quotes, uh, and that. And then tier three is anything greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. That comes to city council for your approval. All right? Um, so, uh, so that's the basics of it. But there are, um, there are some exceptions. So sometimes, um, there are, uh, professional services, like if we were to change up our city attorney, we could, that's a professional service. We wouldn't have to necessarily take bids or go through a process like that. We would, uh, be able to, um, find whoever we're looking for, uh, consulting services, auditing, architecture, banking, things like that. Um, so sometimes there is a specialized skill that you can't really get bids for because there's only one provider. So that is called that as well is there's an exception for that. Yes, exactly. Exactly. Um, it's a very specialized, uh, skill. Um, and then, uh, it does address change orders as well. Sometimes that can be an issue. So it does address change orders. Um, now also in section five, it talks about the disposal of surplus property and how we're going to go about doing that. So it just spells out, uh, very succinctly how we're gonna purchase things and how we will dispose of things, uh, that we have previously purchased. Um, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Councilman?
Yes, they are. Yeah. In fact, we had lots of good suggestions from the department heads, um, to make it better. So, uh, we, everybody went through it and, and marked it up for us.
Questions?
This is, this is just study. That's it. Yep.
Council, good to see you. Been here for a couple of weeks, but um, I just want to start off and kind of tell you kind of the direction and kind of what we, what we've been doing the last little while with this gas plant. There's a lot involved in it with getting pricing, you know, just we talked about the government policy and whatnot with with our gas line extension, our engineering costs, with the gas purchase, working with possible different vendors in Enbridge as far as getting that gas delivered to us, uh, and the Jones, the, the gas line, but they don't have the actual gas. You can actually get a, get a different broker to, to supply that gas for a different price. Um, number one, I'll just go with the air permit. Our air permit is moving forward. We are, uh, have sent a notice of intent to the Division of Air Quality. So we're pretty much halfway done with that air permit, which is looking good. Um, one that tells us how, how high our stacks need to be for this gas plant. We're looking at thirty feet, uh, stacks. So, which is very significant compared to other places that have to put in like a forty foot stack to try and get that out a little bit. Obviously, these, these would have a, uh, SCR, which is a scrubber that gives you the noxious fuels. How that's what, so we didn't hardly any noxious fuels at all. So that's kind of what the air is all about. Actually paid for that air. Uh, we haven't, uh, or excuse me, we budgeted for that air permit in this fiscal year. So that's going to get paid for in this fiscal year. These other items obviously will be included and if we move forward with this through a financing option with U N S. And I'll just go with those real quick, like the gas line extension. But half of that, there was a lot of discussion, how much we need. We're going to bring that gas line from um, we, we get a lot of talk with Enbridge. Able to get that gas line extended from uh, one west, halfway up the block from fifty south to run our fifteen P S I. It's going to be a four inch gas line. The budget cost for that is $65,000. Have that ran that half the block, it'll be four inch. That, that equals the, the meter set. For that gas train, meter train. So, so you have a huge, the, the gas line can have a meter train that would actually be ready to go into the gas plant. The fee for Enbridge would be about $2,400 a month. That's their service fee for a meter in the size. So that's something in the way of this is forward. We'll have to obviously budget for that on a yearly basis. So there's, there's some costs there. Been working really hard today to try to get some engineering costs kind of came down. Not the only one I'm really comfortable with is power engineers and our Salt Lake City. They kept with fifty thousand dollars to have power taken from the building into our substation E. So we can tie a generator anywhere in our circuits that's outside the building. Cause that's not included in the actual proposal that Cat sent us. So that's excluded and we go over a few of that too. It's about forty. Gas purchase, we're working with Summit Energy. Things there as far as a six hour, an eight hour, or an 18 hour. So a lot of those rooms will tell us what that cost is going to be per decade term. How much that strike cross is going to be to run that unit. And then. So any questions so far?
I just have a question. So you, you've inquired about Summit Energy versus Enbridge.
Correct.
Do you have an idea of the price difference between these two?
So I've got some numbers from Enbridge. Their decade term is a lot higher. I talked to Summit Energy today and he says they could be a fortune one, two dollars. Enbridge could be per decade term. So that's a lot at that point, but especially the gas that we might burn. So he was going to try and give some numbers to me, you know, here in the next few weeks. Hopefully we'll, we'll have some numbers pinned down. In the meantime, but let's just say a six hour day. Six hour day room from Enbridge would be about five dollars and forty-four cents a day. So which is about, sure with that price, but for a, that's, that's the long term. For six months, for six hours a day, about 240,000. To run six, it's six months for six hours a day. Obviously it goes up if we run that a little bit. So, so I'm working on some pricing there as far as maybe getting. See what we can do there. Obviously we have to pay a transmission fee as well to transmit it. It's like we want to transmit something to us. We have to pay that.
So you don't have a, a quote from Summit Energy for decades?
Yeah, I don't. And I'm hoping that, you know, next week if we need to.
Are there any other providers out there besides this?
I'm not sure if there is. I don't, I need to look into that, see what there is, but that's the only two that I was given names for. I know, I know this sucks, does a lot of them about this, cause what they, they wrote a guess for a lot of bigger entities. Set me. Places.
Representative Troy Shelley has talked to me about this and you may want to just.
See, see, yeah, cause if, if we get the best price out, it's going to help us. What you've got for our strike rents, that's, it's usually we can run it, more money we can make off of that power. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Amanda. Yeah. So, yeah. Katie, if you want to pull that next slide up. So this here. Will be, if, if we used to go and finance through UMs, let's say, for instance. We had a, we had a meeting with them about on March 10. And they brought this slideshow up and just kind of went over some things that's required of them from us to, to provide. We can, next slide. So we have to obviously set up a, a generation, a member generation service through the UMs Board of Directors. The PMC for the member service project will have the oversight responsibility for the UMs side positions ownership, ownership and financing of the project. For voting purposes, on the PMC only represented with an entitlement share in the project, then zero percent shall have voting rights, which is myself as even representative. So I'd be the only one that would vote on this, obviously. So I'd be the sole, sole on because it'd be our project. Okay, next slide. Obviously the project agreements, there would be a purchase agreement between UMs and the vendor, which is Cat Wheeler. Um, UMs will own, acquire and install generators, generate building. We obviously own the building if that's the direction we, we go. And 10 feet of the building. So we own that, which is good. UMs will execute agreement and any, all change orders. So if there's any change orders. Cat Wheeler has to tell UMs, this will be a change order, what, what we need to do. So, so it's really all our books. Council and mayor say, hey, we have a change of. It's good. Cause I hate changing both. When specification selected, agreed to by the member, it's an exhibit of the, the degree. So which, whatever that, that gas unit is. UMs will issue bonds for the cost of the project. That could be private placement, bank qualified, ensure how that. Kind of his job is here, maybe he could explain some of that bank stuff and that financing a little bit better, but I like to say. Hopefully we can pinpoint this down a little bit. As the sole participant, even will pay all costs associated with the project on a take or pay basis. So obviously that it's our project. Once it's paid for. Or excuse me, UX owns the project that was paid for and then it's our project. We don't, our, our set funds pay. Capacity agreement between UMs and Epro. UMs will sell all the project capacity even, so whatever that project can sell. We, we will get that onto our system. So we can reduce our loans. Epro will operate and maintain the generators. And we have actually talked to Cat Wheeler about this. Epro may elect to enter into an agreement with vendor for complete and which, which would be really good on our end to do that, have them come do that means oil changes and certain things. UMs will establish a renewal and replacement fund through the UMs budget. That replacing fund obviously is, any parts need to be replaced.
On the first, if you'll go back to the, the last slide. On the first thing there, it says UMs will own, acquire and install generators, generator building. Including everything within 10 feet of the building. Does that mean that we turn our building?
I asked that question. They said, no, if you own the building, that is your bid. So they would only.
If they were building the building.
If we were building the building, correct. If, if the bonds. Yeah. So if, where we own the building, it's ours, it's already there. That's where that. We would, they would own that. That would be our property. If there was a side, that would be part of their, their agreement. Great. Good questions. Thank you. Yeah, don't be jumping anytime. Um, project team, obviously the member, I E from city, UMs representative, mayor and city council approval body. And which will see day to day oversight of the project. UMs, obviously there's Jackie Kinnon, she's managing director of Enbridge Relations. Emily Wagner, she's the chief legal officer. I think you met a few of these. Scott Fox is the chief financial officer. Uh, Glenn Vance, he's the manager of projects. He, he just started through UMs. He's been, he's moved, he's moved to the organization. Obviously they go through bond casting. And there's others involved, obviously. In transmission side, which I don't think will have to be too involved in transmission. Uh, I was kind of lingering on that a bit. So if we was to put in a, a generator that was over five megawatts. We would have to go through the transmission side. Cause rock and power requires us to let them enroll. Capacity, we will be put back on the system. So which could strain their system to capabilities that would, would support. So that's the overalls of the 2.2 megawatt. Kind of, it's kind of the, off the books right there. Wayne Anderson is metering portion of it. He, he would do all the metering and help us with all that, if you all have. Helps the resource, which, which others didn't. He would update our scheduling. Maybe say, hey, maybe you guys should run this today. This is kind of busy here. This development required for a member's internal generation. Pre-engagement, obviously a lot of these we've already covered. The project scope, covered a lot of those building. You know, startup and testing, we haven't quite got there yet. And then as far as the case of security, noise analysis. Um, the big one, project scope is the E dam requirement, which is coming when rock and power passes, if the sperm goes through the 2026. This E dam requirement is going to be huge for us to be able to utilize and see if that. If we're going to be able to run this unit and help ourselves on the transmission side. Cause if we're short power on the transmission side, we're going to have to pay a higher price for the transmission. But if we can generate that power on, that's where the C dam requirement strategy is going to come into play.
Is there any thought that? This being a, a, you have some objectives, there any thought that? Let's say another UMs member is in a very precarious situation, like maybe what we, 22, 23. Would UMs require us to transmit power into the system to alleviate, and maybe we're in a better position. So no problems, but they require us to, to transfer power into the system so that that city or cities. Would be protected and.
Yeah. Yeah. I think so because you know, if, if our loans cover, let's say this, it's our loans covered. And the, the price is good for us to run. We could push that power back out to the same place and for, for the, maybe the, the parity. Tie, you know, it could be you, you, you. I feel like this would come into play and alleviate that higher cost of power that they have to buy. That, that could come into play and that's, that's, I think it's in that agreement with the, with the agreement that we have as well. So who pays for a generation?
They would.
On the committee, so you can't just want to have that. I don't see that under a real.
Yeah. So as far, as far as the retention bond, there should not be any issues with that. We would have to require any.
I'm saying, what do you have there?
Yes, if they were our stack ice or below 30 feet, we don't have any, any requirements. Yeah. So like I said, the side requirements, we've already got side location. Pretty much our land and rain is all, all made. Yeah, there. We have water and sewer beside. Obviously there will be some upgrades there that we could plan on doing through the whole scope of the project. Gas interconnection, obviously I kind of went through that a little bit. Some, where's the tower location? Where's that line extension coming from? We're still working on a few things on the transmission and distribution side. But the interconnection of that, obviously that's going to take some engineering. That's why I reached out to a couple of engineering firms to see what that's going to look like. Cause that's our cost. Substation, obviously the generator, you're right next to a substation, which is ideal. Looping capabilities. Looping capabilities. We do have capabilities of looping other circuits into that substation that we had to. Which is really benefit on the owner's part. So we had to, you know, run a critical loan and we had to actually run somewhere. Dedicate a circuit and just have this generator run. We can possibly do that. That's going to take some engineering and some schematic stuff to figure out over time. So. Lightning station, we probably won't have to do any lighting station. That's simply more beyond a meter notification that it talks about where we're under the fire. Data provided by Epro, which is, this new plant will have all the data driven. How long the flash run, the gas is for, the kilowatt outage is, is actually running. So all that data is going to be. Obviously it can be submitted by UMs as well. So maybe they'll, you know, be able to see what that looks like as well. Metering, it's always the UMs specifications. That's where Wayne. Um, we talked about fire suppression. I talked to Jeff a little bit about that to make sure we're covered on fire suppression. There's some IT tech stuff out there. I think it's true the name of it. It's, it's something that's pretty high tech, but it's what it can do is if it detects smoke. So if there's any smoke, it, it will send that alarm immediately to, to, to the fire department. So it's, it's pretty high tech system. So there's any smoke on, they can send that alarm instead of even if there's a fire, calls that smoke. Obviously there's the black start. That, that's a big thing, right? Are we going to be able to black start the stain when we have a huge outage for the whole city? And we start the stain up and give it money and serve those critical loans and that's the engineering portion of it could work through to try to get of that.
I think that's something, I think we'd all be very interested in how much of the city could we, um, yes. If we were cut off from power, you know, storm or something else, you know, how much and for how long? Um, that's something that I'm very interested in.
Yeah. And I agree. I, I am too. And, and I talked to a lot of other cities that have, that have done this. And they're saying there's a lot of engineering work that has to be involved. Plus there has to be a lot of work involved on, on our side. I guess on the, on the lighting side, do switching and everything too. So you have to really have a an operation procedure on how to do that, make that work correctly. So you're not overloading the circuit or, or, you know, training it. And obviously somewhere. So.
So Corey, what is your forecast for how much, how many months or weeks out of the year?
So I, I've done a lot of calculations, Mayor, and I figured we could probably run this planning 1,100 hours a year. And that would cover, I think it would cover about six hours in July, August, September. But that's, that's not every day, but that's pretty close to every day. Probably one month in the winter, like December to Jan. December and January seem like higher months as far as our. And you know, our starts, you've seen it, it's just good. Escalate, we can, we have the capability, that's where the air permit is going to come into play. The air permit is going to tell us that we can run these things 24/7, 365. That, that's where this air permit, that's what we wanted to do. So if we don't run it 1,100 hours a year. As far as the noxious fuel side, we need, we need noxious fuels. So that's a plus. So we went ahead and did the whole setup for the whole air permit. So, and that's for two units too. And that's for both units as well. So like I said. One unit, 1,100 hours a year. Our maintenance can be pretty low, you know, for the first few years, but once our load keeps increasing, we can see where we're. Okay. Um, next steps. Obviously member service project include of the main service, that would have to go through the UMs. If we used to finance through that, so I'm still talking finance here. Obviously UX would have to review the equipment over from the vendor, this is Cat Wheeler. Project scope process, but you have to run operations over. Prepare a file, sit for B A request, which I mentioned, I don't know if that will have to happen because. They would want to have a. they would want to have a uh project agreement put together, we chat and cover. There's some cost involved there. Obviously, it's nice of the finance from the financial performance. Cost estimated is about thirty thousand. That's the U M scope of it.
Yeah, and those are U M's requirements.
U M's requirements, so if if we use the finance through them, this would be their requirements. So in our environment, member scope would be our side requirement, which we already have. Um, we have water, sewer, land grading, permitting, our air, our air quality, air quality permit is over there. Um, as far as other permitting, I don't know if we, you know, go through some of the county stuff to make sure that, you know, that would have to be involved. Work through that if that's the case. Our gas interconnection, our status and the requirements of that. It's kind of like on our member scope. And like I said, like I mentioned earlier in that other slide, transmission and distribution. Um, distribution lighting station from the gas plant to the substation, which is a couple of feet. Transformer, um, that that might be a big thing. Yes, exactly.
So we could have it through.
Substation configuration, obviously, that's something that we're working through. Our engineers can block on to see what that what that substation configuration looks like, you know, with with all the relay and all the setting, with everything followed. So yeah, that's really the the gist of it, um, I want to come out with a party with what uh Capule has given us. To deep run through. So uh, the overall cost of, so this would include the the J S A. We're gonna upgrade the building pretty well. It's gonna be ready for two units, it's gonna have one unit now, but it's gonna have a pad conduit to the gas line. There there will be some upgrades in our our office space over there. Uh, you know, there's some things that we could probably kick out that we really wouldn't need, but anyway, so the overall cost is seventy four million. For that alone. That doesn't include, like I mentioned before, the air, the gas line extension, the the uh engineering cost and also the gas purchase, so we just keep that in mind. But if we do finance through U M S, we can include this uh and the benefit from, if we was to finance from U M S instead of us carrying it on our looks. The uh correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, um we we figured that our uh interest rate is gonna be a slightly lower if we was to go through U M S, because they're gonna have that bond council to try to give those uh interest rates low as they possibly can to earn and maybe what what we should do is quality.
The gist I got as well.
So, um anyway, yeah, I I know this is under a study agenda, so I want to give more numbers down to you guys. Next few weeks and I don't, I'll be beneficial to come forward to you guys in a couple of weeks and say, hey, this is on the action agenda, that's that's maybe see what we can do, so.
So annual cost production?
Yes, so I thank you. I actually did this, Mayor, because I knew I was gonna give the question. So I just did a like a, let's say we get a ten million dollar bond, let's just say a four and a half percent interest, a twenty year bond. We even have to pay forty three thousand dollars. For one, and that would come out of the interfront. Information, so in March, which was last month, we we spent forty seven thousand dollars on buying power off our exchange. We bought fourteen hundred and six kilowatts on fifty two dollars a five cents of per watt hour. Um, we, that's high load. Low load hours, we spent, or excuse me, we bought eleven hundred and four A W. Four, four, almost five cents, four and a half cents. That comes out to forty seven. So my first initial gap reaction is okay, we're paying forty three thousand. But we're buying power for forty seven. Maybe I'm thinking not quite correctly, but that's four thousand dollar savings if it's just off the bond. Possibly we can help save in January alone. We got nine hundred and ninety kilo kilowatts at ninety seven, not cents a kilowatt hour. This is power we had a purchase ahead of itself. And so that's a fifty thousand dollars. So we can pay out that bond. I feel like in a quicker timeframe, if we was to have this agenda here, uh, and eventually have a and maybe you guys become change into the this structure set. I saw what it's like in July, August, September. Even if we only run for close close eleven hundred dollars a year, you know, we might have offset that call. Questions on that? There's a lot, there's been a lot for me involved in this, trying to get it to, you know, for SAP today and going to move it forward. Getting go for me twice. Generator plant, they they just built it, it's similar to ours next Tuesday. And the way that the power is coming out of that to the substation is similarly what we want to do. I just want to do the I M, see what that looks like and I I like to see things before I actually, you know, say, yeah, I got figured out, but I these go closer to see what's that. And and these numbers, Mayor Council, are just something that I'm, you know, putting out there and as far as the the uh the bond and with what we have actually bought power for the last few months. So price did pretty well right there, so you know, we bought a lot of power for April, usually April, May is super low price. On, and then I just started thinking of July comes in, I see here. It's just fourteen cents a kilowatt. We have to build six kilowatt.
I might have to mention, this is something that Corey let me know some time ago, that Ephraim increased our power usage by ten percent in the last year. And that put us in the top five cities with U M S. And so we very much are are increasing our power need, ten percent is a lot. And wait until you have a hospital come online and homes and other industry, line industry that we have coming. And that's going to be ten percent will feel like that's a
A pretty good deal, yeah. Yeah, and and I can mention, I think we paid to the highest page, it was like ten four.
Yeah, which is unheard of. I mean, in the history of I recall when I started in fifteen ninety nine, I think we had twelve hundred meters. Yeah, we doubled it. Twenty five years I've been here, which doesn't seem like a lot. That's what I do. So thank you.
Could you reach out to me if anything, any questions, I'd be happy to help you out in this, so, okay, thanks.
I didn't see it or study it again, Candace? I I mean, Megan?
Actually, surprise, it's me. But uh Candace was the one who was prepped for this. What you need to know about this is this is coming down from the state, this is state mandated. We also have a time limit on this, it needs to be passed by the end of May. So, um, we, so essentially, what this is doing is it is telling uh us how we deal with people's personal data and how we're going to um dispose of it uh in the appropriate manner. So, um if you look at uh the purpose, this policy serves uh Ephraim's privacy pro- program, policies, practice and and procedures for the processing of personal data. All right, and we have a list of uh definitions there. So goes through governance. How detailed do you need this to be? Okay, just the highlights, all right, so um basically Candace and I are making sure that what we, the information we take is only the information we take and also we're not keeping it for a long time. And there's uh gonna be, once a calendar year, there's gonna be data privacy training. And um inventory all the I T systems, all the records, all processing activities, so it is gonna be a lot of work just to make sure that we're handling people's uh data appropriately. So still a lot to to um work through how we're going to accomplish that, but um that's, that's what I can tell you in a nutshell.
I might also add a little bit of commentary here, and that is that we weren't very part of the city. Our citizens information, I I went up Katie and I went up to look at the Well, it looks like a electronic fortress. It takes up an entire room upstairs, the third, the second floor. And that's the reason why we have not been able to move upstairs yet, while we've been waiting is to get all this protective electronics in so that we can't be hacked. So that our data is secure. So that um we cannot be held hostage here. Because that is because we're on one of the trip with cities. You have hackers that come in. Then they send you a little message. The message says for a billion dollars, we'll release the data. Put it on the dark web. Several cities in Utah have been caught with this. Had to pay, they won't disclose that much, but it's it's a lot. So working very hard to keep our data protected.
And that's, that's all now, in, before we pass it next time, please go through it, if there's anything that stands out to you that needs attention, just let me know. All right. All right, so see if I can get this moved a little bit. There we go. All right, so um recently we had uh an opportunity. Brian and I and John met with um Jenna, the real one, to uh talk about the opportunity zones in Ephraim. Now, we have already talked about uh the opportunity zone down to the south, but there's also a zone to the north. Now, what was set up in uh two twenty three, I believe it was October, fall of twenty three, um is when this got set up. And what Jenna was recommending is that we trigger this parcel. Now, what that means is um if we trigger this parcel, it starts the twenty five year clock and the property taxes for this parcel will um twenty five percent comes to the city, seventy five percent go to inland port authority, seventy percent comes back to the city for us to use in the city. Um, so uh currently there is a a project being built. And uh if we want to do this, we would need to do it now before uh they uh start business. Uh, and the price increases now. What we can use that money for is roads, anything that uh benefits the project areas in the city. Um, so it could be equipment, it could be uh improvements, it could be anything, you have heard Jenna talk about the this in the past, so um but in this case, we are not going through uh uh a third party, it is we ourselves who are uh triggering this parcel and and doing this. So um downsides are minimal, um it would uh divert money from its usual course. And it will go to inland port and then back to us instead of uh its usual flow. Yep, for administrative. Well, in this case, there's a development, it's the hotel. Okay, there's already a development on it, um we talked to the individual who is doing that project, not interested in going through the whole P I D process. Um, but we can do it on our own, uh with, all we have to do is pass a resolution. And and therefore, the the seventy percent of the property taxes, seventy percent plus the twenty five percent. So that's ninety five percent of the property taxes will come directly to the city. Uh, for us to utilize in investments in the city. Can I?
Any question?
Yeah. Oh, sure, Bryant, did I miss anything? Correct.
That's the thing to consider. This is a hotel and it, there may be a couple of other businesses there eventually. You know, you're not bypassing households that would pay for schools. You're you're bypassing you know, it's hotel tourism, maybe some other businesses that would locate there. So, but but that is something to to think about, and we may get some pushback from the school district, I'm not sure, but
One, as you mentioned, one thing, as I understand this, so set me to main difference between this and what was done a couple of weeks ago. That group is seeking a bond against the property. We're not seeking a bond in this case, but we are triggering the the tax dollars, the incremental tax dollars. Uh, kind of for the same purpose, right, so instead of going to pay the bond, it would go to this good city. That person, that's all set up when it was established, as Katie said back in and that's been stung by the airport, so that was just uh it is available to us, if you choose to go that route, it allows us to use some of the incremental taxes towards things that would
Benefit the area.
Benefit the areas. Water, utility, roads, equipment. All of those.
Actually, it's to benefit the entire city. It's not site specific.
So in this case, nobody's taking a bond on it, but it's still throughout the taxes, you know, that's in my mind, that's
There is some, there's some federal tax benefits for those that in that invest in opportunity zone areas. Right, are is that, are we talking about the same thing?
State tax benefits and Yeah, there is an opportunity zone with tax incentives, I don't think it's the same thing as us. You know, in the past, we've had a recycling zone, we've had an opportunity zone. I think it has a similar name, but different connotation in this case. That's my understanding, I might be wrong.
Yeah, I may have misnamed it on the agenda, sorry about that. All right. Okay, so on this, so think about it and then uh we'll discuss whether or not to put it as an action agenda item.
Thank you, moving on to now, action agenda. A Ephraim City ordinance twenty five dash oh two business license ordinance amendment. It is down.
It is.
Okay, we covered this in study agenda last time. So this is kind of just cleaning up our ordinance a little bit to make sure our code reflects what we're implementing is reflected in the code vice versa. So basically, we have changed the process where your license no longer expires at the end of the calendar year, but a year for when initiated or issued. So that there's a change. We're getting a little bit more strict. Enters for not renewing within thirty days. And then if they don't renew within sixty days, the license will just be closed if they're bound operating for the others that way. But we spend a lot of constantly going after businesses, making visits, emailing, calling, trying to get them to receive. And whether it was on paper or online, same level of difficulty for a certain few. So this will kind of condense that process and the licenses just blows. It also, in the past, if a license were to be revoked, it'd have to come before a city council. We are making a change to that, that it will be an administrative staff role to, and decision to withdraw or revoke that business license. It would be based on the code and following those things that they, if they failed to provide that information or didn't pass a fire inspection or something like that, it would be off a very specific criteria. They would be notified, they would have time to make those changes before anything was ever deployed. They can also reapply as soon as everything is compliant. That's long in that process. I did update a couple of fees because the fire chief changed the fee of the fire inspection. And so that is also an item that will be updated. And then he also added, for a commercial beer license, annually, they have to provide a real fee and a thousand dollar bond. So we need to make that clear in the fees for that as well. Because it just showed it application, but it is annual for them.
So Megan, with this ordinance, is the updated fee schedule, I'm turning to it, and I can't seem to find it.
Oh, so it's on, yeah, it's just here. Nothing is really changing.
But has the updated fee schedule been has the updated fee schedule been included with the fire department? Fire inspection?
Yes, it was approved last July.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if this includes the
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions, council members? Any for motion?
Order five oh-two, business license ordinance event.
That's for Bill, second question for Perry. Perry, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. We may not have item B, we're gonna hold on fog. In Ephraim, no fog.
So if I'm getting presenting this for adoption. Basically, if this is in ordinance, kind of helps with guidelines and inspections and actually important on industries. And any commercial industry would use a restatement deal with such ways. The only thing we have in our ordinance previously was kind of geared toward our repair shops. Basically, that was kind of silent on this fast look piece. So it was in our study agenda last time. You guys want me to build through this? If you guys looked at it, anybody has any questions?
Any questions, council members?
Will the businesses be notified that this is, this new code is new? I'm looking off the bill.
I don't, so right now, the business license renewed warrants that they have made. So they're restratied, they're center center. That's already been, that's already been placed. They'll be notifying and, and we, we haven't worked through the exact details. We want to give them a thought about giving them, giving the businesses a laminated poster of the best kitchen management practices that they can display. So we will be contacting the businesses that don't know, they, they all should know. But we do now have something to back us up, and we can enforce a little.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it's very important to protect the citizen and to protect the businesses. And to make your job a lot easier. And in ours, ours too, needs to be done to make it right if anybody knows about the creation waters. Everybody thinks, you know, especially the spirit of them, it's simple, and we did, it ended some very serious Yeah, it's, we're seeing some very serious things.
We, we actually had help Mount Pleasant. Actually down, so we got a panic. When you first started in Mount Pleasant, so it's not just us, it's everywhere.
And we have, we have, we tried to, this'll just make it to me a lot better each year to, to patrol. Because we have tried and tried and tried in the past. But it's really easy for restaurants to say, yeah, yeah, I agree. Next time some person comes on, I'm gonna turn the drain on it. Different circumstances, but I think for the city, I agree a hundred percent that this is gonna be a good thing.
Also, just to point out, for business licenses, they, when it is a restaurant or something like that, they also state how to dispose.
And that's been in place.
Following their recent maintenance annually for their
They don't have them, like their business one.
No. Yes, if they don't show us a recent inspection. Because when someone comes and inspects it, they put like needs to be inspected by, because depending on production, that can vary from restaurant to restaurant. So kind of like the hood for certain restaurants, summer every three months, summer every six months.
It depends on the size of the center.
Is it our folks that do the inspections?
Yeah.
What do we do? Just talking, but we do have a lot better can, such, than we used to have, we used to to tell them, but we have no way. These is coming like probably cases. Yeah, we, we're interested in these, absolutely. Three, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So we have that just said that we'll have to look into, does actually say based, is commercial and industrial, but any kitchen would be considered, I mean, it's a food service, but
Food services require one. So Subway does not have one. They don't fry anything. They don't use any oils. So it would probably kind of be dependent. I don't believe this school uses fryer.
That would be
Definitely.
So we I think the cafeteria does have a recent, I'm pretty sure. But I think, I think Subway, this should probably have. But it also kind of stays in this. It stays in here, but it's, it's a I think it would be I, I think that the church house is largely mitigated. Church, at least, whether the same church house is things, I just wonder if there's what's best practice of other communities, even early. Look at that, you know, Manta High School, one of those types of things. Just trying to think through, that's a lot of grease, so add sauces and those types of things, but.
Hey, you have a question? Thank you. Jeff, just before you go, just a little info. Today, I saw a UDOT state sweeper working the streets of Mount Pleasant. That is a difference. I've had talks with, with Cole, with Scott there. Jeff also there is just great. Maybe I've got, I think we're related, it is, but it's a little bit off the topic.
Can we move this?
Yeah. You can talk with him later. Okay, looking for a motion?
Ordinance CO twenty-five dash oh-three. In Title A, Chapter twenty-eight, regarding fats, oils, grease, and soils control. Want the rest of it or is that?
Motion made by Councilman Revere. By Councilman Reveal.
Yes.
Stay right there.
Yes, stay right there.
I changed it to put you all together. Sorry. I thought you'd appreciate it.
Basically, it's the for your certification. So it's a tool to help them with the financial exam for production. It's, you need to put it in your packet because it is very, very long. You have this single electronic. Or you can see me, I can that's basically what it is. We do it every year. Section of John completes. Collection system. Discharge system, this section, section, so it's, it's quite involved. It takes a few people.
It is very interesting. Every day.
I'm sure.
Yeah, that's
Agenda, is there an issue?
We just need to do the office.
Okay. So this is for adoption on item C.
And this will waste water planning program.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Reveal, second by Councilman Renard, all in favor?
Yes.
Are you good to go? Moving on to item D, Ephraim City Resolution twenty-five dash oh-seven. You can take share though.
Yeah, unless you want to read it. Do you want to read it? You're good at it.
You're crazy.
Okay, here we go. This is a resolution proclaiming a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas in, do we need to read it all, do you think? It's Arbor Day.
We do this every year. We adopt this every so that we maintain the trees that the U S A does eventually.
And this year, we're choosing April twenty-fifth, which marks the one hundred and fifty-third anniversary of Arbor Day. As Arbor Day. That's right. Go ahead. Anthony, you should read that. We, we should go along. Everybody read a sec. But we love trees.
We have to plant a certain amount of trees as a city. Do that as a city mainly at the cemetery. But we also have done it in other locations, city. Park and Main Street. And I think Jeff, you remember how many trees we have to plant here in the city? A certain amount. I think it's like seventeen trees, or five.
Five and seven.
Five and seven.
Make it twenty-three. Yeah, twenty-three.
But don't include
No, no.
ECR twenty-five oh-seven. Resolution proclaiming April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five be set aside as Arbor Day for the planting of trees.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Renard, felt second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor?
Yes.
Item E, Ephraim City Ordinance twenty-five dash oh-four repeal the city manager ordinance. We've read this a little bit more carefully, or things in there that we felt like needed to be changed in second thought with it. And so we've decided in consultation with our lawyer, we determined that we would repeal this. And then we would instate probably within a month, another ordinance detailing the duties of the city. Any questions, council members?
I would just, I've read it. See a problem existing in the way voting. So I, I can explain to me what we would change.
We changed our form of city government without knowing it.
I disagree, and so does our city attorney. You, you cannot change the form of government without a vote of the people. So this would not change the form of city government.
It did show up on the state's website to change.
Manager by ordinance, sort of changed it to city manager by ordinance is our form of government.
Didn't, didn't the attorney say, he looked at it, that he
Well, not to my, but this, we need more collaboration. The city council collaborating. Well, that, that will come out in, as we collaborate.
Last week, this one's some other things and. He said she's been trying to get this kind of kind of. Back burner project. For three years. And just trying to get a thing. Let's let's get it not sneaking it any, of course, but just. We better have this to protect us. So I appreciate that 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 context gives me a little bit. That's a thing for. That's I'm sure we can put a good solution.
Okay.
And just. Just asking questions.
Sure.
But what what difference is this than previous ones to make it the?
The previous city manag- we we didn't have one. And so that's why Candace has been working so hard on it. We had bits and pieces. But we didn't have an entire ordinance. And as this was passed and as we completed. You and I have talked about this, Chad, and the rest of the council members individually, we've talked about it. Determine that we would, we would like to have a little more collaboration. With you. A little more talking with one another in collaboration to come up with the ordinance that we all felt.
Just by asking the question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let you continue the discussion.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions, Councilman?
Now. If you have the time. Just together.
Next thirty days.
The next.
Yep. A for motion?
But we. Collaborate.
Recent.
So so if you ask a question.
Well, I have a process of voting. So we've cut off. Comments. So. Motion made by Councilor Reveal, second. Second by Councilmember Perry, but Councilmember received it. All in favor.
Yes.
You asked us. Thank you. Uh, now we'll go to council reports and we'll start with Councilmember Norten.
And our planning zoning. Discussion was going to be my. Paper is tender.
And they're still discussing, aren't they?
Yeah, they're. They decided to push. It was the parking, parking requirements for. Uh, some of our zones. Um, so that that will be the. Scandinavian days had another committee meeting and. Track. Great fiftieth. Fiftieth anniversary of our Scandinavian festival. Reports looking at. Plans for the bowls, the skate park. It's good.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Ridge.
Something really to report right now. Going to meet on the bylaws and things for this historical community. I've had a couple of people reach out to me. And. That was a cut. That was called just missed by the M.C. from coordinator. So I'll call them. On it. It's over. And. Um, I think that's it right now. Thank you, Councilor Perry.
Yes, I just. Um, I wasn't present to the last meeting. I did. I did watch it on. YouTube. And it was very good, very good way to to watch it. Um, but I didn't. I normally voted. You know, or the city voted. I didn't vote. I'd like to at least have a chance to. To say, talk about the the project. Try to keep it to the project. Everybody knows I was. Wasn't involved with some of the decisions at the first and and I don't agree how some of them. And. Suzanne Dean, I guess, I'm right. This is my view of them. I'm saying this to. To. To jeopardize our party. But yes, this is my view. So they do write a paper. I hope you get it correct. They, I hope. I hope everybody gives me the same respect I give them. On their respects and their view. This is my view. I think I'm talking for a lot of people that I have talked to in the community. I tried to keep it. I, you know, the fact thing, all all these. It's a learning experience. Cleanland Parks is a new, new thing to reform city. Stay there now with. Top facts and. You try and give the facts, but basically it would mean it comes down. Inland ports people are probably the the best knowledgeable people. And they probably have the fact, but then you talk to different people and, you know. Definitely. But I try to put money respecting. Both with the inland ports and with the developer. The reason why I I don't like. The in that on this project, I do like. Do like inland ports. I don't. I hope I can say that it's a good thing for you to sit in. But my concerns on this project is this is for developers. Been out there developing. It was born with, because a lot of the decisions that you have made. Before I was. And so it's been made. I have respect for the people who made them, but whether I think they're right. Different. This is my view. That road goes down. It isn't. I agree. Industrial parks, good thing. The last meeting, we changed it from the industrial part. To open enough to anything the developer. I don't agree with that. I don't think it's. Good to have development by housing or advising or whatever. I don't agree with it, so I I don't agree. This is the the best. Um. I wasn't on board with somewhat of the rule that goes down to industrial. I just don't like the fact that. Um, we changed the planning or the zoning that they can basically. Develop to do what you want. What are we going to do in twenty years when? It's full of houses and the industrials come on. What are we going to put industrial? The city's going to find. Different questions, but that's my view. Um, the developer that's applied for this hasn't in the past years. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, they've brought in several, several beautiful descriptions of what they're doing. And they haven't done anything when the north end of. North end of town have done almost everything and they've said that they're going to do. Um, there's no money. And I mean, if it goes out and goes out and goes out and goes out where. My bottom line is that I don't want the taxpayer that pay for it. I want the people that are developing and live there because they got all the comeback city and I believe. Inland forces. Told us that 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 loan and I, if I did that, I'd get loaned back. But I don't feel that. This is more inland force concern is is what are you going to put on that property that we don't have down? Very good. End of town. To generate any funds to pay to pay for them. Um, he's had seven years and how many houses has he got? Maybe a dozen of them. It's really concerned to me that. Um, he's supposed to be following through on all these projects and he hasn't followed through on on the any. Giving housing or all outstanding. What's? The other concern I have is is the road. They come in and do the roads to the standards that we have now. What are you going to do in 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 two years when they start? Cracking and, um, I would suggest that we need to double our standards on our notes because they're they're just not working and I don't believe that's happened yet. Um. But that's concerning that it goes two years, three years and there's no houses there. There's no. I vote with them know of this project and. I I can go into a lot and try to keep it to this project. There were decisions made before I was here. I don't agree. I don't agree. On the replacement. That wasn't my. My call. Um, I try to do my best to to stand by you guys. I hope I don't offend anybody. It's my thoughts. My thoughts and the people I talk to. I've talked to a lot of people that. They don't. In it at all, period. They don't even take the time to move. They're just against. I'm not against the hospital we got. I just think it's. I'm getting in here. And the bottom line is, you know. We've got a hospital twenty miles away, both directions. We have life. Life flight too. I'm going to need that hospital, especially with some of the things they that I've heard very often. So I do want here. But for what cost? What cost do we want hospital? To the citizens. Especially now, I think there's cars going in there. So much going in and in. And that even hospitals. Work out, but a private developer, he is private developer that's got life for the road. Has told us and told us again, I can't afford it. It's just not feasible to build it. We get our hopes up. Okay, we're going to get this, we get that. That's very concerning to me. Other. They're doing. So my vote, not on. None. Inland ports. This road and this. This development, because I think it's a bad investment. If if if. The verdict group has done all this, would have followed through with even portion they said that they begin to do. And if a mom that like me corrected. But if they'd even done a portion of what they said that we had to deal with, the votes that. Yes, they're legal. But. Yes, they're legal, but are they good for the community? What they say? The other rule has changed and changed. I my vote went no. And I appreciate the time, everybody. And I hope we understand that it's my opinion. But based on the cities and the people I talk to. Your guy's decision of being legal, but that's your decision. It's not me to say. State that. We fact the reports, try the. We did me. Or. Utility Board. Matt and I think Cory and Jeff kind of covered it. If I miss something. That we were talking about. Things that were going to come to the city. I think my Cory and. Jeff has already brought to us. Um, we had another. Cemetery Board meeting and this was. A little bit before. This was before the last meeting. We haven't had any. Um, it went well. This is a program for the real the hate that you could. Say that there's a few spots that you have to touch, but it's going to be. All the hats. Thank you, Councilman.
Right. Thank you, Chad. I know you expected, I expected. Glad you're here. Much better. Along those lines, I I appreciated Dennis's note and the newsletter the last day. Pid, think educating ourselves, some. You know, it's just good. I I. Expressed plenty last meeting about how. It was a wild process for me to get up to speed, which. That takes me to my next thing, just Katie, others. Uh, thank you. You guys don't skip a beat. I think Candace isn't here. We can't see her. They're so good. We're good. Katie, this last meeting gave us. Favor work to assess her as a city manager. That's pretty good. Again, I had, I don't. I don't. It's always proven some things that. I mean, I love working here with you guys. And just timely, yes, I mean, sometimes I'll call or text. I got a meeting. Or we'll just take that that date. And help me get up to speed on something, so it's. I think you're here to help each other. It's just. I'm not going to be ready. Hopefully we can keep working well together. New City Council, they had a great event. It was talked about in the newsletter already. But it was a. Yeah. They they did a little Mario Kart thing, the bowling alley thing is next week. Break out the drugs. Like that. Which is a great thing. I just can't remember the title exactly. Of course, Easter is a big thing for New City Council. Yeah, Lions, fun. Next. Strays. The kids will be. Or the New City Council will be helping out with. The craziest on Easter. Sent it to the. Fun days. Library and our. Like clerk. Beca del man. Our. So that's a great opportunity for. Middle school student or a small college student. Circulation desk type of issue. I think it's a really smart use of resources. And a strategic way of dealing with some vegetarian threats. We have tax next meeting is June. It's all about. It's. We'll try to keep it interesting. We got to mention Marshall's here. He's with the revenue department. We're glad to have Marshall about some. Being missing beat. If Jordan can't be somewhere, Marshall's definitely showing up in the Instagram videos, so he's not able to pray to be embarrassed and. Working when Jordan is embarrassed. So, uh, you want to tell me, tell me about. Well, of course.
Yes, yes.
Two or something. Like it's a funny time.
One thing, I I guess this is the time right of the the thing I have for Jeb is okay. So, uh. This is from the college and my capacity as a city council person, it's not a college, same thing. The. Looking to. They're probably going to Main Street and draw like ball. Uh, for their. Back to school thing for the students, the night for classes start on a Wednesday this coming fall. August eighteenth or something like that. And it'll go from seven to nine, but we need, we're. They're wondering if we could possibly close off. Eighty-nine. They don't say you got thing, but just right in between your pull up and the. So that you can.
Draw.
Can interact with the local businesses, minor park.
And the pavement.
Yeah, in in the. So so they're they're just, they're wondering if that's something that can even be pursued. I think sometimes in the past, they just. They've not closed it off for the, I remain, some of those things. Sometimes for parades, it's. Hapsies, but they are trying to ask. So it's Brittany Cornellson and Jill Drive, all those numbers are going to be better. Pursuing this and if they, if we can accommodate. Pursuing this and if they, if we can accommodate a closure. Uh, they they can come up with something else in the institute, uh. Bowery, what we call that pavilion there and they can work out, but they want to interact with local businesses if possible, so you give them a little direction and it's okay. That that's an application of the state. With you dot, with you dot. And then they do have their some kind of police that will be be happy to assist with, but. Um, the voter would be similar for today, I. At the end of month, he's probably crawling on the runway, but yeah, they just, they don't mean literally heads and knees, but just kind of medical, they call. Me, I did say what's a crawl, they said it's like a stroll. Yeah, so then.
And they have to submit their plans of what they intend to be the hours, but roads will be closed, their security plan. That is disseminated to police, public works, power and fire. I'm well thankful.
Anyway, they uh. Some in the meeting said, well, some people wanted thanks for permission for stuff like that. These guys, I'll call it, hopefully before, but they.
So I'm sure.
And it is one block, I mean, I know it's a big, but but it's just. That block. Not like the whole parade right over there. Oh, well. Is this? Sort of their thing with. A fall harvest.
Like did you on Richfield campus?
This is uh, just a more first year experience, let's really help the the students succeed. Have want to continue and get connected to local, but there's there's more than one way to do this, they just said, hey, let's start with. The one that's all the trickiest and then we need to pivot. Stay a minute and before we go over the special plan for it. Chief boxing and power as well and our availability. Just a little feedback, I'm excited, it's a lot easier to go down. Which is still state property. And it is. And your intention of closing out. Access to a match, which is, and it's still a little like.
And Christiansen meets.
And risk me.
Risk managers, they they come to both of us. Which they need often. Especially if anybody has kids or grandkids or at least sporting events. We really need to figure out. Poison, still lease and porta potties. We got a lot of people, if anybody's been up there, God, can you be? Hundreds of kids playing at the school, at the school at all. But there's no rest, so I need fortify, I take my grandkids. I'm only fast, we run through the house and. A lot of these teams are from out of town, they have that. Luxury to do it. You have a lot of little kids, lots of adults that they really think. We need to figure out some porta potties that they can, or they have places to go.
That's on the school district, right, so.
Yeah, but there's you.
Yeah.
They have restaurants there. There just isn't. Kids do that. A lot of, a lot of. The boys can do that, but the. The doors, it's getting, it gets. Pretty bad, pretty, but pretty clean up. But really think it would be appreciative to the citizens and.
Could, would you bring that to Jordan, please, and because that is a problem that needs.
Have these sports. Opportunity.
In about two weeks. Thank you. Okay, uh, Katie and I spoke with the Ferguson today and. We also spoke with, in connection with this seminar, John Curtis's field rep. And we talked about.
Congressional.
Congressional spending. It's the new.
Yes.
And uh, it looks like we, they don't know for sure, but it looks like that portal maybe will open up. Uh, next week, as soon as next week and um. So we now have two. Congressional delegation members that we'll be working with. With some congressional directed spending. And so we're we're excited about. Things like. Um, April eighth. Uh, Kenny and I will be having breakfast with President Kiff and the community council. And we're looking forward to that, we we haven't had. She usually has these a couple of times here, this I believe, also this one. It's going to be the first one that she's had, so we'll be able to maybe discuss some of these things with. Uh, April fourth. We'll be having lunch with Jenna Drake and some economic leaders in Ridgefield. Um, and that's exciting. Um, to to be involved with that, we'll be able to ask some questions. Dealing with economic issues in San Pete County. Yes, I think he was sworn in. What's today? I think he was sworn in yesterday. April first.
Oh, yes, that's right, because it was a joke.
It was. It was. Um. We also attended an airport meeting. And all the county executives. Executive, that's correct, all the county commissioners. To that point, we're there, we have very good discussions with them. Uh, regarding the future of the. Uh, we have sent an invite to Senator Curtis. To attend the the Scandinavian days, we've also invited the governor, we've also invited. Uh, I haven't heard anything back from the governor, I think I. I think like myself. But also by representative ones, and of course, at this point. Um, Senator Curtis, they are now on a hundred and seventy-nine day work. Uh, days in Washington, that that is almost double. Uh, they're on a hundred and seventy-nine workdays and a hundred and thirty-nine home. You know, visiting with. With constituents and so he's. He's trying to figure out, you know, when, you know, I have to be in Washington, so they can't give us a definite. Yes or no. Uh. Chad, you have the newsletter.
We get. I didn't want to go to Brave City, some to the. Yes, the chairman of community. Senator Darren was there. Get the service, but it's very, very. You very, very. Good favor to the community, there was a lot of businesses there. But that's all I have.
Yeah, and something else in connection with that chat that I want to mention is. Congressman Burgess Owens has probably visited San Pete County. I thought Chris Stewart was great. Congressman Burgess Owens has uh, visited and has been here in Ephraim. And throughout San Pete County, more than any congressman I've ever seen. Uh, I told him, I had there with him the other night and I told him that. I said, I've never seen a congressman so hands on. And wanting to be with his constituents. Uh, and when Congressman, I'm proud to say that and I stole his that virtue of wanting to be in touch with. With his constituents, I think it's, I think it's super, I love it. And I know Chad does. I mean, he's come to our Ephraim City retreats. We have a council retreat, he's been there, he's listened to us, we've listened to him. And he attends mayor and commissioner meeting, uh, not every time, but on a regular basis, he. This last time he was there. And uh, he he lets us know and I think, didn't he let you know? Kind of what's happening in Washington, did he ever begin with that?
For me personally. It answered a lot of my questions that you said, I mean, you watch. What's going on in the news and to get it right from somebody that's involved with both of them. Both of them, they're both amazing. Well, it was. Very good. Hopefully it wasn't from that meeting.
I don't have anything.
Um, just for me, uh, this is a message from Candace. And she says, tell all the council. That their travel and checks will be ready by Monday, so come in on Monday or thereafter, okay? And we'll have it ready for you.
Thanks for the UL.
CT conference. And just for anybody who might be listening, we will not have our regularly scheduled uh, city council meeting. On the third uh, Wednesday, because we will be at ULCT. And uh, and do remember on the twenty-sixth, we do have our budget retreat, ten to noon. Uh, okay, so for the um, uh, Public Works Building bids. There there is a pre-bid ma- meeting tomorrow at ten, I believe. Huh? Eleven, and then we have um, next Wednesday, all the bids will be in a bit and. City council, we will want you on Thursday at six o'clock. Um, to officially award the bid so they can get to work. Yes, it it will, it will just be that one meeting, Candace will be out of town, so at a conference herself, so. The tenth. Next Thursday. Yep. So. And that is it for me. Do I have that date wrong? Is that a Thursday?
Yeah.
Then that's it, yes. Yes. Mm-hmm, and it's just for, to approve this one thing. Oh, you, yes. Actually, it's going to be in the conference room instead. Ours will be in the conference room, they've already scheduled this space. I forgot, thank you. Five minutes. Right, and that is it.
Looking for motion. There's the.
For sixteen. For the provisions of Utah State Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. For the purpose of restructuring for deed bargaining and sale of real property.